Good evening, and welcome to the 5:00 PM work session of the Village of Amerik, Board of Trustees. Any motion to open this meeting?
So moved. Second.
Favor.
Hi.
Okay. Okay. We get back in session. In timely fashion. Get out and do people's business. Tonight, there's advice of counsel. The motion will be offered to the Board of Trustees convene as a Board of Police Commissioners. There's executive session, there's a manager's office personnel matter. Is anticipated that a motion will be offered into executive session pursuant to 105-1F of New York State Public Offices. Land use personnel matter is anticipated that a motion will be offered into move into executive session pursuant also to 105-1F of the New York State Public Offices. And then there are possible appointments to the Park and Rec Committee. The also to the Public Schools and Zone Management Commission, and that's also 105-1F of the New York Public Offices. Then there is a 105-1D into a motion into executive session for 130 Beach Avenue. Then there's ABC Properties versus is anticipated that a motion will be offered to go into executive session pursuant to 105-1D. And then there's Goldstein versus the Village of Amerik. Is anticipated that a motion will be presented into executive session pursuant to 105-1D in the New York Public Offices. Would you like to make those motions?
Before you make the motions, Tom, the advice of counsel actually is written incorrectly. It should be advice of counsel and executive session for the Board of Trustees to meet both as police commissioners and also the Board of Trustees on potentially inappropriate emails following our last meeting.
Can I just make one amendment?
With that change, I'm happy to make the motion.
Well, I don't understand what you're saying. Advice of counsel and of executive session?
An advice of counsel means we can listen to what the council has to say, but we cannot discuss nor take votes or take any action. As executive session, you can take the advice of counsel and then decide what you want to do with it. At least that's how it's been explained to me.
Let me ask the attorney, Mr. Spalzino.
Yes.
Not to take votes in advice of counsel.
That's correct. You don't take votes in advice of counsel.
Okay. Right, so that being said.
Can I make one other amendment just for item C? It's Parks and Recreation, Arts Council, HCZMC, and possibly the ad hoc the ad hoc committee on year-round recreation.
Okay.
So just, okay.
With those changes.
Thanks.
Dan has made the motion. Somebody second.
I'll second.
We'll call a roll, please.
Trustees Winthrop?
Yes.
Trustee Najas?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, so we're going into first the advice of counsel for police commissioners. And then the executive session for police commissioners. Okay? I'll see.
Yes. Do you need, Tom?
What?
Do you need a public motion and that we're convening as police commissioners?
You already did that.
Oh, we didn't.
I think you did it sufficiently.
Okay, thank you. See you later.
Hi, folks. The rest of the
Dude. Dude, dude. Dude. Here is a sitting, the dates.
I think it's the first thing. Camera is on.
Conceptual approach?
Yes.
That's what it should be. Uh, good evening. I don't, I don't see any dates on here. One second. Hi Sally.
Hi Victor. Okay, I believe it's 4B. Your agenda.
Yeah, there are dates for B.
Yeah, it's on the regular meeting, yeah.
Regular meeting.
Setting the dates?
Yeah.
What is it on?
4B on the regular meeting.
4B?
4B.
Okay. Thank you Sally.
You're welcome.
For the regular meeting. Go ahead and have a look then. Okay, is the gang all here? The gang is all here.
Yes.
Okay. We have. Items on for the regular meeting. We're going to take, the first item we're going to take is not on for the regular meeting, it's a conceptual approach to fiscal year 2122. But just so for the folks watching at home, we're going to do all the items that are on the regular meeting. If we run over, we will still take a few minute break to allow the trustees. A sustenance time, and then we might start the regular meeting a little later. Okay? Jerry, I know you've been working hard with the clerk treasurer's office and the. Heads of the department to formulate a budget. Could you give us your conceptual approach to fiscal year 2122?
For mayor, so our approach has been to go to the department heads and ask them to look at their. To look at their supply lines and their contract services lines and provide a 10% cut. And communicate that back to the clerk treasurer and the manager's office where. Staff has put together a budget. That identifies those items as. A potential cut in this year's draft budget, which in fact with some. Other adjustments, including increases in pension and in health costs, which we really have no control over. We have a draft budget well, well under the tax cap. For some room to add some items which are still to be discussed. One example of an item that still needs to be discussed is legal, creating an attorney's office and staff. Which has not been discussed. Items that. May be a priority for the board, of course, has not been discussed, but there is some significant room. Within the tax cap ceiling for us to be able to discuss those items and the board of trustees to make money decisions. So that has been the conceptual plan. The plan has always been to try to work. Towards a budget that comes under the cap, that's typically been the, the method. And with the help of the department heads and the clerk treasurer's office, the assistant village manager and other staff, we have. Achieved that so far, and that has been distributed to the board. We have one other change that we'll talk about in the regular meeting, and in that is my recommendation to have. Departments singularly, if that's the right word, appear before the board of trustees instead of grouping two or three departments. Which typically short changes the third department or second department that ends up. Attending that night. So we're adding more budget meetings because we need to have more time with the budgets, because as. Because the, the budget, the department heads have a lot to explain. And including capital budget, capital purchases, capital items. So that's another change to our budget approach for 2021, 2022.
Thank you Jerry. And we'll. Dates. I know we have conflicts, we'll be discussing dates on a regular meeting.
Okay.
Good. But thank you, and thank you to the department head, clerk treasurer's office.
Tom, while we're on the conceptual discussion, I think Jerry has done a very nice outline of how, how staff has tried to put this together under his leadership. I would like to suggest, as I did in our email, that the budget committee be allowed to participate in our work session. They've been working hard and looking at things, they may have suggestions. I'm not suggesting that we get into a debate, but when they have some constructive suggestions or approaches, I think that would be appropriate. And I also think. At our first meeting, we need to go through the, the options we have for the, you know, in terms of the conceptual approach that Jerry has outlined.
So I share, I share. That will be tomorrow, right? If we, if we.
Dude.
Here is the setting, the dates.
That is the first thing. Cameras on.
Conceptual approach?
Yes.
That's what it should be. Uh, good evening. I don't, I don't see any dates on here.
One second.
Hi Sally.
Hi Victor. Okay, I believe it's four B, your agenda.
Yeah, there are dates for B.
Yeah, it's on the regular meeting, yeah.
Regular meeting.
Setting the dates?
Yeah.
What is it on?
Four B on the regular meeting. Four B.
Okay, thank you Sally.
You're welcome.
It's not for the regular meeting. One handle then. Okay, is the gang all here? Gang is all here.
Yes.
Okay. We have. Items on for the regular meeting. We're gonna take, the first item we're gonna take is not on for the regular meeting, it's a conceptual approach to fiscal year twenty one twenty two. But just so for folks watching at home, we're gonna do all the items that are on the regular meeting. If we run over, we will still take a few minute break to allow trustees. A sustenance time and then we might start the regular meeting a little later. Okay? Jerry, I know you've been working hard with the clerk treasurer's office and the. Heads of the department to formulate a budget, could you give us your conceptual approach to fiscal year twenty one twenty two?
For mayor, so our approach has been to go to the department heads and ask them to look at their. To look at their supply lines and their contract services lines and provide a ten percent cut. And communicate that back to the clerk treasurer and the manager's office where. Staff has put together a budget. That identifies those items as. A potential cut in this year's draft budget, which in fact with some. Other adjustments, including increases in pension and in health costs, which we really have no control over. We have a draft budget well, well under the tax cap. For some room to add some items which are still to be discussed. One example of an item that still needs to be discussed is legal, creating an attorney's office and staff. Which has not been discussed. Items that. May be a priority for the board, of course, has not been discussed, but there is some significant room. Within the tax cap ceiling for us to be able to discuss those items and the board of trustees to make money decisions. So that has been the conceptual plan, the plan has always been to try to work. Towards a budget that comes under the cap, that's typically been the, the method. And with the help of the department heads and the clerk treasurer's office, the assistant village manager and other staff, we have. Achieved that so far and that has been distributed to the board. We have one other change that we'll talk about in the regular meeting and in that is. My recommendation to have departments. Singularly, if that's the right word, appear before the board of trustees instead of grouping two or three departments. Which typically short changes the third department or second department that ends up. Attending that night, so we're adding more budget meetings because we need to have more time with the budgets. Because as. Because the, the budget, the department heads have a lot to explain. And including capital budget or capital purchases, capital items. So that's another change to our budget approach for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Thank you Jerry.
Thank you.
Dates. I know we have conflicts, we'll be discussing dates on a regular meeting.
Okay. Good.
But thank you and thank you to the department head, clerk treasurer's office.
Yep.
Tom, while we're on the conceptual discussion, I think Jerry has done a very nice outline. Of how, how staff has tried to put this together under his leadership. I would like to suggest, as I did in our email, that the budget committee be allowed to participate in our work session. They've been working hard and looking at things, they may have suggestions, I'm not suggesting that we get into a. Debate, but when they have some constructive suggestions or approaches, I think that would be appropriate. And I also think. At our first meeting, we need to go through the, the options we have for the, you know, in terms of the conceptual approach that Jerry has outlined. So I share, I share the.
That will be tomorrow, right, if we, we approve this, starting tomorrow.
It would, if, if we meet tomorrow, it would start tomorrow, but I, I, I share this with Jerry, Jerry didn't seem to have an objection to any of it. He wanted the board to make sure that the board had approved that and, you know, and, and distribute, you know, distribution of the. The, the, the revenue and the cost control reports and, you know, I just, I think it's, it's good to involve, you know, have them involved. You know, if they have any constructive suggestions that they can add to, you know, our thought process.
I, I would be fine with giving. At the meeting, we could, we could reserve some time to them for questions, but you know, we, we, you know, have to target it too. You know, so if, if they can listen, you know, sit there and listen and then have fifteen minutes or so to, to. Have their questions, questions at the next meeting about what was discussed, if they have some time to formulate them. But you know, it, it can't be, you know, we, we can't have a discussion with fifteen people, because it'll just, you know, it, it'll be midnight.
But, but I'm thinking is if we go through a department and we meet with a department and then they leave. They have some suggestions or some questions that we had not thought of at the end of.
That's what I'm saying.
That we allow them to, you know, if the time permits, you know, to, you know, make their suggestion.
I am going to allot them a time at every meeting. They'll be able to speak at every meeting, they'll be in a lot of time. This way they can focus. But I, but I, please send, you should send them the material.
Okay.
Purchase of police vehicles, that it's on for the regular meeting. Purchasing three vehicles, Jerry, you wanna go into this or?
Dan can go into it, I'm gonna pull it up right now, but. We continue to replace vehicles as well as. Make sure that they are environmentally friendly, so Dan, go ahead.
So, this is where the purchase, we're proposing to use the grant funds that were secured for the village through Assemblyman Otis's office. We received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars before I spent some money for the fire department, the total cost of these three vehicles is. Just under one hundred and fifty six thousand dollars, which is slightly lower than we actually projected with Otis's office. They are all hybrid vehicles and we're looking to get the purchase authorized by the board.
I have a question if I may. Dan, when the two fifty grant was applied for, was that a blanket grant or did it back up to get to that figure?
It was a blanket grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was secured by Assemblyman Otis. Then, as a board and the staff, we discussed how to use those funds. I think when the crisis first hit last year, you know, the manager said, let's move some of these operating items into capital. And then we worked with Otis's office to secure the grant. So we.
So we have, we have a hun, this is basically a hundred and fifty thousand, you know, on the police vehicles, correct?
Correct.
And how much of the fire department, was the eighty, eighty three thousand for the tanks, was that part of it or what?
What's included in the fire department requests were the. The, the Scott packs that the board authorized. I think we purchased, I think it was twenty four thousand dollars, give or take. The other items for the fire department were radios. And turnout gear. And that got up to about the, the ninety thousand dollars for the fire department's capital requests. But today we've only purchased the Scott packs.
Say that one, the last one again?
Today, the only off, the only purchase that's been authorized are the Scott packs that were purchased.
Okay, so basically the two fifty is going to be. Basically the police, the police cars in the fire department. Materials.
Yes, it's all public safety related.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is out for regular meeting.
One question Dan, that's Arnold, you said this will, will be reimbursed. Can it, will, can it happen as soon as we, we, we build them? Is, is there a waiting period, how, how does the reimbursement in a nutshell?
So, one of the things we, one of the reasons why we waited so long is we're waiting for additional materials from. The dormitory authority of the state of New York, that's the city agency through which the grant is organized. We, we're still waiting, I had reached out to Assemblyman Otis's office and spoke with his, you know. Chief of staff. She let me know that she has been pushing the, the dormitory authority as has the rest of the state legislators. But that there was nothing that should prevent us from moving forward at this time. When I asked her the question, she answered in about ten seconds, which led me to believe that we weren't the first. Community to ask her about when we could start spending the money and then she'd looked into it already, so. You know, once we get the information from the state on how we can apply and when we can apply, we'll do everything, we filed everything with the state. Back in summer last year, I can't remember the exact date, but everything's been filed with the state for us to, for them to know what we're purchasing.
Is it a done deal, is there any risk that it, this doesn't happen?
If there was any risk, I'm, I'm sure Ms. Urban from Assemblyman Otis's office would have told me not to move forward. But you know, the fact that when I asked her, she said, by all means, move forward. I, my impression is that many state legislators have inquired about the process. The dormitory is still kind of. Moving slowly, but they've all been told, there's nothing to prevent any municipality from moving forward with purchases under this grant program. So, I've been told move ahead, that's the short answer.
That is also what Steve Otis has related to me.
Okay.
You see no risk essentially, okay?
No, I don't.
But you know, my, my, I still leave the concern of that, you know, there must be a point where the grant is a grant. And you know, gets, gets the seal or gets the, so that, that moment has not happened, it is still, it's still in the works, that's for sure.
Yeah, getting the grand con, the official grand con, contract is still in the works, but like I've been told in, the mayor just affirmed. We've been given the go ahead to spend money.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In front of you. The next item is about Westchester水works, there are seven projects, some are. Changes to products we've already. Approved, some are new projects, we have correspondence on each project from David Birdsall. At the Westchester水works that explains the need for the project. So. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I have minor suggestions for, for the resolutions, but we can go one by one as we, as we, as we pass them. Some are very, one is very minor.
So you want to do it on the regular meeting?
For example, there, there are some minor adjustments in, in the first one, which is the Anderson Hill. Yeah, we can do it, we can do it in the regular. And, and then not, not for today, but overall is, is this, some of the, this, well actually there are seven projects, but there's only six resolutions.
Yeah, the, the, the project which is the filtration plant. The board had adopted a resolution authorizing one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in funding. We had communicated that to the waterworks and the first bill came in and it's more than was authorized by the waterworks. I think that's gonna require a larger discussion, so I, I didn't wanna jam everything through and. Hold up some smaller items or more single items.
That was gonna be my question, because there's some information, but there's no resolution with, that goes with it, so.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll, we'll get to that after.
See if I get more detailed information before we have.
I was gonna say, when you get more information, some, the other important topic is as, as. If, if some of them are gonna be those emergency or non-emergencies especially, then, then kind of if we, if we could, if we could, they. They could let us know when they submit the information, whether some of this is the regular.
Right.
Business or, or emergency, so for the future, mayor, please.
Okay, I can tell you tonight, there's one that is emergency, I know Mr. Tegus sent an email about it, about Howard Avenue. And. They have an emergency slash priority contract. And that, that gets put out to bid every year, it just got renewed with it, it was just put out to bid recently and the same contractor won it. And the main driver of this being a priority project at this time is the need to have the contract available now to plan coordinate with Con Ed. Con Ed will be installing a gas main, by coordinating with the water main work with them, we will benefit by Con Ed picking up the cost of paving. And avoid delays in the installation of the water main upgrade, so the idea was to work with Con Ed, because Con Ed is doing their pipe right now. So that they got the priority guy to work with Con Ed so that it can get done expeditiously and, you know, we didn't have to kind of dig two holes, well, you know. And tear up the street a second time after Con Ed had put the gas pipe in. Con Ed is a. Putting a ton of gas pipes in this village.
Is this, is this Howard Avenue or the, or the other one, the water infrastructure replacement?
This is Howard Avenue.
Okay. And I, yes, and I, actually, the, the concern goes beyond if somebody asks, I, I think it's. It, it, it just helps us and especially in this situation, to know if there are emergency or not, so thank you mayor, that, that helps a lot, that was my question.
All right, so that is on for tonight, all of that. I'm gonna do C mom last, because it just works with how the. This way Victor doesn't have to come in and out. E, memorial to honor those employees and volunteer efforts during COVID nineteen pandemic. This is an idea I had to, you know, honor everybody in this community, especially our emergency workers, our GPW. Our garbage, or, or all the people who helped us get through COVID, we're not through it yet, but at least, you know, the light is at the end of the tunnel. And we sent the idea over to the arts council. And the arts council came up with an absolutely brilliant idea of kind of like a living memorial of. Trees and, you know, just, they had different concepts, but it was all about, you know, plant, doing plantings. To memorialize the work of our employees. I think everyone in the board of trustees saw the. From the arts council and it was just, it, you know, in my view, it was really lovely and it was better than anything I know I could have ever came up with. So I, I think that it's on for the regular meeting resolution to unfold with, you know, the concept. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Everybody's seen it, right?
Yes, yes, it's lovely.
Okay, great. Harbor Island bait station. Jerry, you wanna talk about that or Dan?
I'll let Dan finish it out, but I believe the individual who. Who is leasing the bait station from us would like to return the fifteen minute parking privilege in front of the bait station. In order for him to sign some document that we are asking him to sign. And that document is for. Temporary easement for the construction of the, the reconstruction of the Route One Bridge. Dan, I miss anything?
That's, he's also asked for some parking permits for his staff, but I didn't include that in the resolution. Basically, the resolution is to put the language in the code that allow us to enforce the fifteen minute parking.
Yeah.
I'm sorry Dan, you faded out, what you say again?
The resolution that's been prepared adds the language to the code, which would allow the village to enforce a fifteen minute parking restriction.
Right now it's unenforceable because we never changed the code about it.
Yeah, it was, it was never in the code.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so you can't enforce what's not there.
This, this just, that's more of the date with our signage.
That's correct.
Okay, anybody have any questions or concerns? No, okay, so it's on for the regular meeting, okay, the next item that's on for the regular meeting, just let me check, make sure I got everything here. Is the C mom program. So. I believe, Jerry, you gonna talk about the C mom program?
I am, whenever you want me to.
I'm, I'm gonna bail out. Because it is, it is, as I was explained, somewhat connected to, to ongoing litigation. Though this is, this is a, this is a larger policy issue, but at this stage is connected with that proceeding, so I better just stay out of it and good luck, I do think that. The village has been waiting long for that, but to get it properly done, I'll let you go ahead, I'll catch up with you guys later.
Before you leave, I just wanna give you, after we're done with this, we're gonna take about fifteen minute break, so just, so you know.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jerry, go ahead.
Mayor, C mom stands for Capacity Management and Operations and Maintenance Program, this is a. This is a plan. With a little bit of detail, not much, but a little bit of detail. Providing others. What the village will do to maintain and operate the sewer system that the village operates within the. You know, within the three point two square miles. And so many other communities have this, I know Mr. Spalzino helped me out with locating a couple of examples and then we took those examples. I used a guide that the EPA provides and we created this C mom program. With some detail in it, including the shared services agreement that we have with the town. For a camera truck and the use of their employees. When we need, when we need the lines televised, as well as other commitments like. Checking our manholes to make sure they're in good shape. I have that on a five year rotation in this plan proposed, so we would check twenty percent of our manholes every year with our sewer foreman. Mike I and the motor equipment operator who is typically assigned to him. In Tony's department. And that's what this is about from my end of it.
Jerry, when you say checking manholes, that means making sure that there's, there's no info and infiltration into the manhole?
Right, and also structurally.
Okay.
Yep, that's right.
I have a couple of questions. What would happen if we didn't have seen this, this document, just as a matter of curiosity?
We haven't had this document.
I understand.
A, a group sued us for getting this document, that's what would happen, that's what's happening.
Okay, th- this is in response to.
A lawsuit.
It's more than that, it's also in response, it's also regulatory required that we have.
Well, when it comes to legal authority four point oh. The village of Maric has regularly reviewed, inspected and enforced as follows, the, and the first one is fat oil increase. And how are we doing that?
Fat oil and grease control?
Yeah.
So we respond to backups and things of that nature and we check our pump stations to make sure.
You know, there are, but we, we have a regular maintenance of our sewer lines on Maric Avenue. Because of all the, the restaurants and their associated activity.
Right, so we have a regular process there.
Are.
Is it?
Greased and oil trapped?
Supposed to.
Yeah.
My question is, do we, do we check the restaurants in other facilities that would have the, for instance, the. You know, fat oil and grease traps to make sure that they are working and whatever. And the reason I raise this is prior to your coming, Jerry. We discovered on the Boston Post Road in front of the church, so we don't name any names of restaurants. Significant problems created by grease. Pileup. We also found that from one of the clubs, actually two of the clubs. As entered the village sewer. We didn't find that till it cost us a lot of money to open everything up and redo, you know, redo lines, et cetera. My question is, how 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 do we? Should we be doing more in terms of like annual inspections or permits or something like that for these types of things? Just other than saying we do this. I guess that's my question.
We should, since I've been working here, we did have one of those types of incidents at the Spencer Lot. For a couple of properties that front Boston Post Road, one property that that fronts Maric Avenue, not Boston Post Road. And I will check with our sewer foreman who, when he gets back to work, he's out on a shoulder injury. To see what his process is and what his typical workday. Would allow for him to be able to check. Those types of situations.
So here here's, here's my suggestion. First of all, I think it's a great, a great. And I compliment you on trying to, you know, get writing, which is not an easy task anytime you try and do it. But I'd like to be much more specific on the items of how we are enforcing and what the responsibilities are. In 4.0. And I, and then we need to have something in the. Building department or whatever, or the DPW, or whatever department is responsible for, you know, that we check this. Because many times we we have contracts and other things, and all of a sudden, we just. Don't seem to have the right follow-up because it's not coming up on a tickler, which was supposed to be on a. Computer program that didn't materialize. So, you know, I don't, I don't think we can just totally rely on that. I'd like to be very, much more specific. So that there is something to point to, to a department ahead and say, you know, are you in compliance? And I, I think that it should be tied into the M4. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, I know what you meant.
The MS4 report, which requires many of the same things. So that they should be cross-referenced. And the inspection should be readily available, period. So I'd like that beefed up. I don't necessarily think that that has to be, you have to hold up for that. But I'd like, you know, within, you know, a month or two, you know, to do that.
I'll have that quickly. I'll have it by the next meeting for you, but if we, if we don't have to hold it up. We do have a conversation with an entity tomorrow regarding this plan.
I I have no problem with going forward with it.
Okay.
I just think we need to be a little bit more specific and tie it into other programs that we have to do as well. So we don't say one thing in one program and another in another program.
Okay.
Okay. The other suggestion I have, and this is just a nit in terms of writing. Says Jerry Barbario, and then later on, it says village manager. It should be village manager, Jerry Barbario, and blah, 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 blah. And that repeated throughout the document in many places in different forms.
Okay, well, we'll make sure of that. My editor, Dan Sarnoff, will catch all those.
Those are my only comments on it.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
That's all it's on for a regular meeting and we do just about run out of clock. And hit a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Or you could get the meeting on that, you know, usually.
Voices on.
Hello Kelly.
Hi Augie, how are you?
Good. Okay, Board of Trustees. Give you a couple of minutes, everybody get ready please to get on. Cliff, are we streaming yet?
Augie, can you hear me?
Yes, everything's streaming.
Yes.
Can you start my, Augie or Cliff, can you start my video, please? Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is everybody on?
No, Dan and I just were waiting for.
Wait for Mr. Natchez.
Just a reminder, I see some people called in. If you want to raise your hand, dial star nine if you've dialed in by phone.
Oh, you're doing it, right?
Yes.
Hey, good evening. And welcome to the Village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees meeting, February eighth, 2021. Please join me at the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is communication to the board. Just so you know, there is a five-minute timer on the communications board, and if you're here to talk about what your garbage pickup, that'll be on the next item. Public hearing. So, give one hand up. unmute yourself. Good evening, Ms. Bradshaw.
Yes, hi, um, I live in the 953 West Boston Post Road. I was sent a link to get in on this meeting. We were going to discuss parking. I came into you when I pressed on the link for Zoom. I don't know how many of the other residents of my building are actually on the call.
Okay, yeah, look, thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Bradshaw. That was on the work session, and we did not get to it tonight. It will be the first item on the work session two weeks from now. It'll be addressed then, and I'm sorry, we had a very long executive session with a lot of items on it, and we did not get to it, but.
Oh, it's supposed to be on, what is that, February fifteenth then?
No ma'am, February twenty first.
Twenty second, twenty second.
February twenty second.
Okay, and at what time?
That'll be at five PM.
Five PM. Okay, and I imagine is there going to be new Zoom information?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be online. And it'll be in the village website.
Yeah. Okay, so it's February twenty second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at five PM, and then we can check for the link to join at where?
Okay, on the village website, if you send an email tomorrow.
Okay.
S Roberts.
S Roberts.
S Roberts at B O M N Y dot org.
All right, wait a minute, B O.
He isn't Victor.
Oh, V O M. Is it M?
Yes, it is.
All right, V O M dot org?
No ma'am, V O M N Y.
Oh.
And she will send you the link, and you can share it with your neighbors.
Oh, okay. What is her first name just to?
Sally.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good night, ma'am. Mr. Kevin Duarte Chan.
Ah, yes, good evening, and thank you for taking my call. Good evening to everyone. I think everyone knows by now that I'm usually calling in about issues related to spending and development. And it seems to me now that the Leventhal attorneys are asking the court to award attorneys' fees in connection with a number of FOIL requests that I believe that the village has denied. My question is, could you please explain why the FOIL requests were denied when it seems that much of that information that was requested is actually readily available online on the Village of Mamaronek agendas and meeting minutes?
I'm not going to comment on a litigation, sir. Do it hurt the position of village to do so?
All right, all right, that was all for tonight, thank you.
I'm sorry, couldn't give you more helpful. Daria?
Hi there, I actually have a related question, but it's not specifically about litigation. So, Mr. Mayor, you stated in the work session a few weeks ago your desire to control the cost of litigation related to defending village employees and volunteers that are indemnified. And you also commented that Cindy Goldstein's lawyers even tried to charge us for her Article seventy-eight, but that you caught it. I've seen copies of the bills from the Leventhal firm as well as the village's audit of bills, and it appears that a check was cut to Leventhal for the total invoice amount. There were at least fifty hours of four hundred dollars per hour, so that's twenty thousand dollars billed for the Article seventy-eight filing. Do you think you could please explain what happened and when the village is getting a refund or a credit?
I've explained to you a few times that that is not the case, and it continues to not be the case.
Okay, I just, I heard in the, in the work session that it was the case.
I think, I think you stated that I said it wasn't the case, but I don't, I don't want to be argumentative, but, you know, you started by saying that I said we didn't pay it.
Okay, I guess I'll just, I'll just come with a quote next time.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on PLLB twenty twenty-one front yard garbage pickup. I'm not surprised this is going to engender a lot of comment. Anyone like to make a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Nori, you gotta unmute yourself.
Thanks, second.
Trustees, Winchell?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, let me begin by saying that this is a proposal. The purpose of a public hearing is to hear the thoughts, concerns, and issues that residents have with the proposed. You know, I think that we are here to listen tonight. I'm sure, I've been through issues where we talked about changing sanitation before, and it engenders people are very wedded to how the garbage is picked up. I have lived both in homes where the garbage was picked up, which I own, the garbage was picked up back. Disclosure, this is not an issue for me, so I really, really hear what people have to say about this and what people have to consider. But before we get to the public, ask if any of the board members would like to say. Okay, I see we have a hand raised. Nine, one, four, four, six, seven, eight, six, two, five. How does this person get on? Just repeat the instruction.
I mean, unmute yourself.
Star six to unmute if you're on the phone.
You have to hit star six on your phone, the person who's, yeah, you got it.
Hi Board, Michael Kope, I'm a resident of Colonial Court. Been a resident with my wife for almost fifty-seven years. I'm not against changing to street-side pickup. Matter of fact, I've been doing so on the street for many decades. But I believe at this point, we don't have enough information on what the expected benefits will be, so we can evaluate whether it's worth the loss of what I consider, you know, a very significant benefit for the residents of the Village of Mamaronek. Specifically, I went through the assistant manager's memo to the manager, and I looked at some of the proposed benefits there. And with regards to reducing the opportunity for worker injury by eliminating the need to traverse on private property, you know, specifically, how many sanitation workers have been injured? And what has been the actual loss to the village? How many days off? What is the cost there? And I recognize some of this falls into HEPA and privacy, but a general understanding of what is the loss there to the village. Second, as it pertains to the proposed benefit of moving through certain parts of the village more quickly during the early morning hours, really, this is just going to change what areas see the garbage trucks early. I mean, if things move fast, we're just going to go from one area to another, and if there are problems in those areas, you know, I would hope that the village would work with those community groups to find another way to keep things quiet. You know, I recognize when it comes to my neighborhood, it's noisy. I just don't think this really changes it. It just, it just moves it to other areas. As it pertains to consolidating resources, I mean, I think that's a great reason. I think that's the primary reason, but right now, what does that mean? We're going to go from five routes to one route, five routes to four routes? What does that really mean? And, you know, the real, the gorilla in the room here is the recycling, you know, the garbage men's by agreement with the village can work less than an eight-hour day, sometimes less than half of that. Yet recycling turns out to be a twelve-hour day, so I think that this, you know, in order to go forward, we should have an understanding of how does that work? You know, what support would the sanitation men get in order to, you know, properly do their job with the support they need? What, how many routes would be reduced down? So, like I said, I'd like to support this. I think that this is, you know, in concept, a good idea, but right now there is really no information that's been made available to the public that, you know, would allow me to support this, and in essence, have the residents lose what is a very nice benefit that we're paying for right now, and it's just going to change for no reason. So, that's it. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kope, and thank you for your service to both the state and to this community.
And, Mr. Mayor, just I apologize, just for disclosure, I don't know if it's necessary, but to be on the safe side, I currently sit on the committee to review the ethics committee, as well as I'm a member of the volunteer fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kope. Have a good evening, Mike. Ms. Arsoli.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first of all, I just want to ask, I have about a five-minute statement that I'm going to read. Is that okay? I'll read it as efficiently as I can. Okay, thank you. First, let me say that I believe our sanitation workers are some of the hardest workers in this village. They keep our neighborhoods clean and sanitary. Second, I think this whole issue is kind of wrong. The timing is suspect, and your proposed law is flawed in so many ways that I think the public hearing should be postponed until an open face-to-face hearing can take place. Your website states that you started curbside garbage pickup for the safety and welfare of our sanitation crews during the COVID pandemic. But can somebody tell me what the science was behind that move, that going twenty-five feet into my driveway in the early morning was putting them at risk? Your law states that the village manager may exempt households where there are only residents over seventy years old. Would we know how many there are? And what about a two-family house? We have a block, we have an owner next door to me with, who's over seventy, but she has a young family tenant. It's a little not clear there. And since my husband and I are both over seventy, how will sanitation know to pick my garbage up in the side yard and not the curb? Your proposed law states garbage must be placed at curbside no more than twenty-four hours before regular pickup, even though now your guidelines say we have to put it out the night before, not twenty-four hours. So as an example, my pickup is on Tuesday, so someone can put it out on Monday morning and maybe not take it in until they get home from work Tuesday evening. So I'm looking at garbage cans for forty-eight hours twice a week. And when it's windy, we already have cans rolling around the street. I live near a school, and with the cars driving down my street and the kids on the sidewalk, it's not good. What an ugly, particularly unacceptable streetscape that would be, in addition to how dangerous it could be to the safety of our students. And I have not even addressed the animal issue. Section H of the same local law states that trash containers are not permitted in the front yard unless the practical difficulty in locating them in the side or rear yards is proven to be acceptable to the building inspector. So am I to understand that now those homeowners will bring their trash containers from their front yards or from their enclosures and put them on the curb? Or will the sanitation crews continue to get their garbage for them in their front yard? Because it begs the question, sanitation can walk five or ten feet into someone's front yard to pick up garbage. Can't they walk another fifteen to get mine? And how is it going to be lost? Because unfortunately, it is my opinion that the village doesn't do a very good job in enforcing similar types of laws. And I know what you're going to say, so let me say it first. I absolutely do not expect our police department to enforce these kinds of laws. I'm sure that the village was hurt during this pandemic because the village depends on revenues other than taxes. How much money does the village believe will be saved with curbside pickup? Will people lose jobs? Will the sanitation get longer? Will longer routes mean overtime eat up your savings? And with longer routes and longer days at a very labor-intensive job, aren't you jeopardizing the safety and welfare of our crews? I hope the board listens and puts the aesthetic value and well-being and safety of our essential sanitation workers on with any potential expense-side savings. There has to be other ways. Many residents believe this is a worthwhile expenditure. I know our garbage will still be picked up either way, but this has been a special service that this village has provided for many years. It would be a shame to lose it. If it's not broken, don't fix it. It's one of the things that makes this village special. So I urge this board again, go back to side yard pickup until you have a proper hearing where people can come out in person to view their concerns. If I were not in this. If I were not in this box, but had a regular live public hearing and said the same words, you would realize how many people might agree with me because the entire room would react. You'll never get a sense of how people feel when they are muted. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Arsoli. Mr. Gross.
Yeah, I appreciate you taking our comments. I completely agree with the comments we were sharing just before me. I, you know, I really call into question the motives of changing the law under the guise of COVID safety. It just doesn't really add up to me. A few things I would point out, you know, firstly, this is an issue that impacts nearly every resident of the village every week of the year. And so this is important. I think the economic savings going to curbside pickup has not been quantified. And I think we, you know, it's owed to all of us to understand that better. My hunch is that whatever the savings are, de minimis. And importantly, the savings comes out of the pockets of the hard-working employees that are serving our community, you know, so dutifully. Yeah. And so, you know, it's easy to talk and throw around this concept of savings, but let's think about the human lives that it's going to impact and, you know, the people that need it the most right now. In terms of the environmental impact, similarly, I think it's likely very de minimis, the amount of idling that will be saved by going to curbside pickup. I don't know if there's been an environmental impact study that's been done. I doubt it. But if we really want to get serious on the topic of the environment, we should be looking into alternatives like electric trucks and the like. And I'll talk about, you know, reducing curbside stalling. I just don't think that moves the needle. You know, I also think we're going to see a meaningful uptick in injuries of residents in the village. You know, people are not trained on how to haul their trash to the curb. And now that we have snowy and icy and wet conditions, we're going to see a lot more people getting hurt, all to save a couple bucks here and there. It just, that makes no sense. And then there's the issue of neighborhood cleanliness and appearances with the comment made before. You know, I see garbage cans strewn all over the street that get blown over by the wind. You know, it's attracting more animals. It's really, it's unsightly. And it's really, it's inexcusable, and it shouldn't continue to be the case. And, you know, I don't know what the plan is for savings. I highly doubt there's going to be a reduction or already sky-high taxes, or if there's an offset envisioned for future taxes. Again, I really call that into question. You know, and finally, I'll just sum up by saying it just, it feels like a very slow and steady erosion of services that are being offered to village residents. And, you know, this predates me as a village resident, but, you know, years ago, as I understand it, there were school bus services offered for our children. That's gone away. Now we're talking about, you know, getting rid of garbage collection at the side of the back of the house. And I just question, you know, what's next? You know, what's next on the agenda to chip away at the services that are being provided to village residents? You know, are you going to ask us to pave our own roads or, you know, deliver our own water? I just, it feels, the whole law feels very disingenuous in terms of doing this under the guise of COVID safety. And so I'd strongly encourage you to reconsider and revert back to the back or side of the house pickup that we had prior to COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would speak to this issue? Ellen Silver? Unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. So I'm sort of indifferent, frankly, to this issue. Our garbage had been picked up in the back. I don't feel inconvenienced bringing it to the curb. I do think that it would benefit residents to really understand, though, the reason for making the change, and if there are any cost savings to the village in doing that. While this issue came up, it occurs to me that this may be a better, a good opportunity to sort of broaden the whole notion of collection, such as I think that the big leaf piles that we have every fall, those are a hazard. They create, you know, very narrow lanes and roads, and they fly around on windy days. And I think that we should get to a point of either encouraging residents to do mulch mow, keeping the leaves on their lawn. It's good for the lawns if you do the mulching. Or if they want to collect the leaves, they should baggy them and buy a degradable bags, and that should be brought to the curb and picked up. But the leaf piles are a hazard. And I would love for this to just be a bigger sort of change rather than just, you know, this one-off thing. Also, if we are going to be doing curbside, I would hope that the village with the food waste recycling program would be thinking about, maybe now that there'll be room in the schedule, to go to curbside pickup for food waste, which if residents were doing the composting, their actual trash would be very, very de minimis. I have a family of four, and we only put our garbage out once a week because maybe we have one, maybe two bags of trash because we're doing the food waste recycling. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Anyone else in the audience? Jerry, would you like to talk about the, you know, proposal for saving, what the savings are?
Mayor, the savings initially, and I appreciate, I appreciate what Mr. Copey asked for because I had not done the research on the number of workman's comp cases that have resulted inside and rear yard trash collection. But that is something that I hope to find time to do, although we're getting into budget season, so I'll figure something out. But the workman's comp insurance has provided us communication that workman's comp liability insurance would go down twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars if the law was passed and the BOT approved front yard collection. Because just like a previous caller had said, there may be a significant increased risk for our sanitation employees to get hurt, especially with the ice and the snow that we've been experiencing in the last few weeks, since the beginning of December, actually. And that all those pathways have to be now cleared around people's homes. And so there's, if they don't clear those walkways to get to the trashcans, then our employees are put at risk for getting to those trashcans. So there's probably a little bit of research that I still have to do. There was never a discussion about reduction of routes or reduction in collection days. But if front yard collection does provide the opportunity for us to maybe introduce a new service, which is food scrap recycling at curbside, then we could potentially have a savings in tipping fees as well, which are dump fees that we have. I'm sorry, I couldn't be more specific.
No, that's very informed. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Board trustees, comments, thoughts?
I have a couple of comments. That's okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So first, I'm going to thank everybody for commenting. The memo that Mike Copey discussed, the August sixth memo, has been on a lot of our work sessions, but it's not on backup tonight. So I think that might, that might be helpful. It's a short memo, but it should have been on backup. And, you know, I mean, personally, I don't, I don't mind carrying my garbage out, but I understand everybody's complaints. And I, you know, I work at home, so I can bring the bins in early. But I do think that we need to do a little bigger deep dive on the numbers of what we're actually saving and see if we can transition to add that service of food scrap pickup. Because I think if we, if, if we had food scrap pickup, we, I mean, I can, I can, you know, echo what Ellen said. We have a lot less garbage because we compost our food scraps. So I would really like to have a little bit of a deeper dive into what the numbers are. And I also do think that having these, having hearings on Zoom is very hard because we can't see what, you know, there's now fifteen people who are watching the meeting, but we can't see anybody's expressions. So I don't know whether there's a way, when we do public hearings, we can actually have more people's faces on the screen, if we can do that just for public hearings. Because I think, I think we're going to be doing these Zoom meetings for a really long time. And that's it. Oh, actually, one other thing. To Mr. Gross, who made the comment about the school buses, that was entirely a school board decision, not a municipal government decision. So it's still painful, but it wasn't, it wasn't part of your municipal taxes as part of the school taxes, which probably feel like the same thing when you're writing the check.
Ellen, you have your end up?
Um, yeah, I agree. I wish we had some more, some more hard numbers on this. And I think before we make a change, some real hard numbers that we can really look at, I think are necessary. I really do appreciate all the comments. I, I understand that rear yard and side yard pickup is a real benefit. And people who are paying really high taxes in this community view that as a benefit. I totally get it. I think it's a benefit that has not been made available to all residents in the village. I think it should be made available to all residents in the village. I think as new people move in, they have not been offered this service. They have not received this service. And so as we think about changing the law and requiring everyone to move their garbage to the curb, I'd like to just offer the opportunity for people to have rear and side yard pickup to everybody. You know, it just hasn't been made available to new residents. Personally, when I moved into my home, we spoke with the garbage pickup guys three weeks in a row and said, here's where it is on the side of our house. Can you get it here? Yep, sure. We'll go there and get it. Never happened. We finally gave up. No one on my street gets its house side service. No one, no one. Everyone puts out their garbage twice a week. And, and I just, I know, and I asked Tony at one point, how many people are getting this so-called concierge garbage service? It's not a lot, but people love it. I had it in my home in Eastchester. I loved it. It takes one chore off your list. You don't have to take your garbage out. So if we think about keeping things the way they are, I would like the village to publicize this service that we offer to residents and to allow new residents to sign up for it, who haven't taken advantage of it in the past because they didn't know about it. So that's where I'd like to go with this, if we keep it. And I suspect that then our costs, our garbage costs will go up. But I do think we need to offer it to everybody. We can't just have it be a grandfathered service that sticks around for people who've lived here years and years.
There have been emails that we have received over the last few days and weeks. I'd like them included as part of the record for tonight's hearing.
Let me just follow on that. If I, I think we still have some of the commenters, residents that spoke today. For example, Ms. Sarasoli, if you have this in writing, I think you could please send it to us, to the village manager. And then I think we, as we, as you get responses and we organize more information, I think all your points should be answered. Of course, Mr. Adam Gross and Mr. Copey's three points. I think those we got, and we can, of course, listen to the tape. I think, I think, I think the three of you, together with anybody who has written to us, deserves that, their comments be incorporated in a response. I think other municipalities are considering this, have considered this, and COVID has pushed this up. Not just as, I think it goes beyond just take this service or drop it, but as to a more comprehensive review of how it could be done, including the scraps and reviewing routes and everything. For example, I think this discussion at least asked us to look at that. And of course, management is more, is closer to it, but there's been prior studies, et cetera. So it's time to look at it and put it together. Tanum Amerinick did a couple, not complicated PowerPoints, but to present it to the public. And that's where the costs analysis came out. So picking up on Dan Sarnoff's August memo, maybe updating it and presenting it to the public. I know, I know we're in budget season and there's many other items, but I know how this one is important to us. And it's not just picking, it affects us because it's something blowing in the street as you're driving out in the morning or for every reason, or late into an afternoon. And so there are many, many ways this affects us also. I think looking at this broadly is important and also to have it, to have it a couple times or revisit it when we have, when we have everything put together so that it could be a very transparent discussion, a more open discussion. It has been in there, but I think it's the first time it hits the public. So let's, let's, let's pick it up and continue it properly.
Okay. You know, I, I guess how I feel about this is I understand the staff's concerns, and I understand the staff's efforts to save money wherever they can. And I really do appreciate that. And I know how hard this is for them. But to me, this is a cost-benefit analysis. This isn't worth it. You know, during a time of COVID, we're all feeling that the world has put enough on us, and I don't want to put anything else on our residents right now. And I think that it possibly should be studied more, but I'm not in favor of moving ahead with this right now because I just think that, you know, people have grown very attached to this. And it's a service that I said that, you know, when I owned homes, I built myself up. I wish that someone would come take my garbage out now. But, you know, that's the burden of living in an apartment, the burden and the beauty of living in a apartment. But, you know, I think that, I don't want to start taking things away from people right now when so many people have lost so much. So I think it's something that needs to be studied further. And, you know, if we can also couple it with the recycling of food waste, if that could be made a more integral part of it, that might make it more palatable to people. But I do also have concern that you saw recently in a couple of weeks, when we had high winds, the people had their recycling out. And there was stuff blown all over the community. And, you know, so I just, I'm wary about doing this. I've been through public hearings before where we talked about bagging leaves. And, you know, people are very attached to not bagging their leaves and putting their leaves outside. And it's always this catch-22, right? It's always, I pay a lot of taxes. I should receive this benefit. But, you know, part of the reason you pay a lot of taxes is because we have a lot of benefits, right? I mean, that's, we pay a lot of taxes because we have great schools. We pay a lot of taxes because you don't have well water. You know, you don't have a septic system. These are all provided by the municipality. So, you know, while we are all concerned about taxes, I think what we have to look at too is, you know, what we get those taxes, and we get a lot for our taxes. You know, you go to other municipalities, you go upstate, the taxes might be a lot lower, but, you know, the school zone is good. And you have to worry about your septic, and you have to worry about your well not failing. So, you know, right now, I'm not in favor of this, but, you know, everyone will look at it in the future. So I don't know what the board wants to do. If you want to hold it over, leave it open. If you want to close it, vote on it. If you want to close it and vote on it, you know.
Well, let me ask you a question. I think that we are not doing side of the house pickup during COVID, is that right? So as long as these COVID emergency orders remain in place, we are requiring everyone to take it to the curb?
This does not change anything about the emergency order.
Right.
Moving forward.
Right. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, this wasn't something that was going to change overnight. I mean, we're in, we're in COVID. So this, we were, we had this little window to work on this while. while, you know, while we're under an emergency order that changes the regular pickup anyway. So I, I think we have time. I think we could hold it open and continue to get more information is what I would think, but.
Jerry, do you think you could get the information in a month or two?
I couldn't, I couldn't get, you know, what, what Michael asked for is a very valid analysis that we should provide. But because in a few minutes, we're talking about budget season. Until the budget is done, which is consuming, I don't know if I can get that information.
Is that something the human resources department can develop?
No, because that proprietary information, that information that's provided is provided to the manager, the workman's comp and the cases and all of that stuff. It's very, it's the health related stuff. So Dan and I are provided that information and we're going to be very busy with the budget. So a, a couple of weeks now, maybe middle of May, probably.
You know, I could suggest that we hold this off until we meet again in person. To Nora's point, I, I also don't think playing Hollywood Squares gives you a, a good room of, a view of how the room is going. And it, I'm sensitive. So get put again for six months and see if we're agreement.
Well, I'd love, I, I think we should try and aim a little bit sooner. And I'd like to, you know, follow up on Kelly's suggestion is maybe leave this open for two months and see, you know, in between things, if we can develop the information and revisit it then. So I'd like to keep, you know, I'd like to move to hold the, the hearing open for, you know, two months, whatever meeting that would be, that be close to, you know, at least.
You gotta have a date.
Well, I, I wonder if, I mean, do we think that we would be passing the same law in its current state? Or there would be, I mean, I, I think that we probably should go ahead when Jerry has time to try and get the analysis. But do we want to keep adjourning it or do we want to just vote this down and do a, do a new public notice? Because we have to adjourn it to a date certain and then keep adjourning it. And what's going to happen, we've had this in the past where people come back and back and back and back to meetings, which I think is frustrating for the public.
That's why I wanted to adjourn it for six months. Give Jerry time to do his homework, which he stated that he needs. I think we should take him at his word.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I don't think, I don't think we're going to be doing, I think we'll still be probably doing pickup at this, at the street for six months, right? So maybe what we do is, you know, every two months we get a report, you know, how's, what's the progress going? What have we learned? So it's still on the topic of the conversation, but not actually to adopt the law.
But, but let me just.
Work session.
Yeah, work session, just an update.
Work session, not, not keep it.
Yeah, just an update.
The, the, Jeff really said that he really doesn't have the time to do that. It has to be May because of the budget season.
Budget adoptions, April 26th. I could, I could start right after that, but I couldn't start before that. The budget is too, there's going to be a lot of questions, a lot of issues. Yeah.
So why don't we put this off until June, the first, our first meeting in June and have some more information about it then?
Well, if the budget is finished in April, why don't we do it in May?
I just wanted to give him a little cushion.
Cause he's got it, he's got it, he's got to do the, the research and the numbers and the presentation. We meet May 10th and May 24th.
What's the first meeting in June?
It's.
The 14th.
14th.
How about a, I'd like to move that may, that we do it for May 10th.
That does, that gives Jerry two weeks to put it together. He could put it.
I mean, Dan, I, I'm, I, I feel like I'm, I'm asking Jerry for something that may be a little more difficult for him to put together, which is, you know, what happens if half the village wants concierge pickup as opposed to the 10% now that are getting it? You know, what are the numbers that way?
You know, Kelly, I don't understand when you say the 10% that are getting it. Everybody has it, you know, if people, you know, a lot of people have chosen to bring it to the street. That's an individual decision.
I, I actually, I think, I think that, I don't think that's correct. I think there are a lot of residents who do not believe that they can have their garbage picked up at the side of their house. They believe they must take it to the curb.
Until this evening, I had no idea.
Yeah, that's.
About that. Because where I used to live, if, if I bought a home in Maranick where I used to live, I took my trash out to the curb. I would have continued to do that, not even asked the question.
That's right.
I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have. I didn't know that that was like that.
Mr. Gross.
I, I just think it's worthwhile. Dan, you're shaking your head. I mean.
I don't agree. I don't, I don't think that's the case. I talk to a lot of people when they move in.
But here's what I'm, Dan, what I'm saying is, let's find out. But can we please find out how many more people who aren't doing it now would want it? That, that's what I'm trying, that's what I want to look into.
Your proposition.
Um, could we?
And a couple, yeah, let's give Mr. Gross a little bit of the.
Yeah. And then I have a question, but yeah, Mr. Gross is there.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I, I would just ask, you know, as Mr. Murphy suggested, I mean, this is a real quality of life issue that's impacting a lot of residents that are already going through a number of hardships. And so to put this off indefinitely another six months, I mean, we've all been living with this for, you know, the past, you know, 10 months or more, you know, where residents are being asked to bring their, their garbage to the curb. And so to put this off for six months or even four months seems just, it doesn't seem like the right thing to be doing. And so, you know, I don't mean to minimize the, the work that, you know, Mr. Barbario needs to do. But in my mind, it seems reasonably straightforward. I'm happy to help you with the analysis if you need the help. But this is a matter of sending a couple of emails, getting some data and putting it together. And I don't think that's something that should take an inordinate amount of time. And so I would suggest, very strongly suggest that we go back to our, you know, standard side of the house pickup until there's more information that can be gathered. And if you want to reassess this and, you know, a later date, I think we should do that. But, you know, people rely on this service. It's an important service. It gets the quality of life and having this, you know, continue to be put off again under the guise of COVID safety. This has nothing to do whatsoever with, you know, protecting our sanitation workers from contracting COVID. So that, that's kind of crazy. So we should be going back to side and back of the house pickup until we have time to actually evaluate the issue and we can make a decision at that point. But I, I would strongly encourage us not to wait another six months just to, you know, stare at this and talk about it again.
What the, the, there isn't a guise here and there's nothing disingenuous here. This is, you know, something that the village enacted, that a lot of communities enacted during COVID to try and minimize contact between our employees and other people. So I, I just, I want to put that out.
That, that's totally fair. And believe me, I, I understand in the beginning of this pandemic, there was a lot of unknowns. We didn't know how the virus was transmitted and how people might contract it. But I think we know enough now to understand that sanitation workers are not contracting COVID by, you know, visiting somebody's side of the home or back of the home to pick up their trash. And so now that we know that as a fact, why are we not going back to the pickup under the laws? It's, you know, been crafted.
I just want to point out that there was no disingenuous actions by any employee of this village or any, any attempt to work under a substitution. But I appreciate your comments, but you know, I, I'm just, I know what happened was here. And I, I noticed there wasn't any malicious intent on anybody's part.
Understood. I, I appreciate that. And that, that's, I, I appreciate you saying that and I believe you. But my point is, you know, at this point in time, we know that sanitation workers are not putting themselves in harm's way of contracting the virus by picking their garbage up on the side of our house. So why are we not reverting back to what the current law is until we have an opportunity to revisit this at some point in the future?
Thank you for making any point, Mr. Gross. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Tom, can I?
So.
Oh, Jerry, go ahead.
So I need to clarify for the board how the reports are provided to us. So, so the workman's comp reports are provided to us by our insurance carrier, our insurance broker. And we meet with them every quarter to go over it. These reports have names on them. They, they also have the department that they're working. But because of the uniqueness, or maybe not the uniqueness of our department, but because of the composition of our public works department, everything, everyone who works for the sanitation department is labeled as a DPW employee. And so I have to go back through years of reports to be able to figure out which individuals were actually hurt while collecting trash on the side and rear. Obviously, we've been in the pandemic for almost a year now. So anything going forward, and I can tell you that it has been significantly, and I can't remember, maybe Dan can remember, but I cannot remember since the pandemic, having a sanitation employee get hurt because of a front yard collection. But I'd have to go back years. The reports are, the reports are, they're presented to us the way they're presented. So I would need a month after budget in order to be able to figure this out. If that's a question that I'm going to have to answer.
So, so what, so what I'm hearing from Jerry is that the idea of going to the front yard pickup during COVID was really just a COVID preventative measure. But it seems like it may have had other benefits in terms of workman's comp and other injuries. So, and there is what Mrs. Saracino said, I mean, Saraceli said that, you know, maybe more individuals, residents could hurt themselves by carrying that out. And we would never collect that, we would never have that data. But we wouldn't have it. But I have a couple of questions. If we're going to go to the deep dive, what if, like thinking outside the box, we had, what would be the cost of having, you know, concierge pickup as, as Kelly calls it? That's like a lovely way of describing it, one day a week, not two days a week. And then, and then the food scrap recycling at the curb. Because frankly, anybody who is recycling their food scraps and driving to Fayette would be happy to carry it to the curb. Like, that's an easier thing. So is that something that could be in the analysis? Not this week.
No. So, so exactly what your question is, everyone on the board should provide scenarios so that I can do that analysis. Everyone has a different, a different scenario. Provide that to me and I will work on it after, I'll work on it in May when the sun is out and it's not snowing. And I'll be able to do that. That's no problem. Because Scarsdale does food scrap recycling at, at the front yard. And I have to still figure out, you know, what their method is. So it'll provide me some more time in the late spring to be able to do that research as well, if the board wants to go that way. But the, the reality is, in the beginning of the pandemic, we had to reduce contact. And that was the most important part. And we had to continue to, it's a public health issue to, to collect sanitation, to collect trash. So that was the decision that we made and it continues to be a benefit to us because our employees are out less because they're not getting us hurt as much. Especially now, imagine going to the side of your house to collect your trash cans with ice melting, snow melting every day and then ice forming on that same sidewalk that night or tonight. It, it's a real, it's a real concern. If I can have after budget season, three to four weeks to do some kind of an analysis in whatever version or scenario you want, you want me to provide, I can do that. That's no problem. I came to this village with a lot of experience in sanitation and public works and I can demonstrate that now, but I just need time.
Thanks, Jerry. I, I just want to point out for, just, just a reminder for all of us that while we were concerned about touch and COVID and, and early on, there were also other impacts on the village in that we had to divert resources to, you know, clean up more and, and hand sanitizing. And, and we've been on an A B schedule and we've had to shift staff around. So COVID emergency orders just, aren't just about the spread of COVID. And by touch, they're, they're about a whole world of shifting the way we have had our staff show up to work or not show up to work and, and what people do to keep everyone safe.
Add to Kelly's point that in our form of government, actually it was Jerry had to, to carry these decisions heavily. And of course, we could ask questions, but precisely in this, in this, you know, he, he had to put it all together. And we just, actually, we couldn't even override it because he, he is the one that has the responsibility. So, so we do, we do support that, but it's, it's a whole, a lot of different difficult issues here. So I'm glad, I think we could discuss this, if not, if not late May, first, first week in June. We move this forward.
You know, to move this forward, I will make a motion that we adjourn this public hearing until June 14th.
I'll second that.
But one question, wouldn't it be something different?
Yeah.
Why just leave it open like that? It's as easy as, if you have the material, start fresh and, and put it all. If we're already, already with this language, we, why just, why, why keep this language? And the, which will, there'll be a different analysis, a different perspective. So why, why, why not just start fresh?
Why do we know there'll be different language?
I don't know if you're going to be able to change the language much. It's pretty simple what the change is.
Yeah.
You cross out side and rear.
Yeah, there could be, for example, I, I, I brought in the idea of seniors from, from, from the Tanama Maranet, which was endorsed by everybody. There could be refinements to that, which is the 70, the, based on comments.
Okay.
So, so that, that, that's one. But, but of course, it may or may not change. You're right. I was just bringing it up for, for discussion.
So the other point I would make about just, you know, taking, just deciding not to adopt this law now and renoticing it or something else in the future is, I think we're going to be wanting to discuss this in a work session, not just at a, not at a regular meeting in a public hearing. I think we're kind of going back to the drawing board and maybe not with the law, but with the whole concept about it. So we might want to have this on a work session versus just go straight out to public hearing.
All right. Well, if, if that's the point. Let me think about this a second. If that's the boards want, I will then withdraw my motion. Somebody has to have a motion to close this public hearing. And then we just don't vote on it.
So move.
Is there any discussion?
Need a sec.
But then we can always reopen it, right?
We could even vote on this same law.
Right. Okay. Okay. I'll second, do we need a second for Dan?
Yeah, I see a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Will be called a rule.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Patches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Aaron Murphy?
Aye. Okay. And I'm imagining there's no motion to adopt. Okay. There we have it. All right. Thank you to everyone who participated tonight. It was an interesting discussion and it was always good to hear from the public the things I, I didn't consider that I now will consider in the future. And we will move forward to our next item on the agenda, order of the bills. So about our case, first, uh, first resolution, item two A. Resolution, authorization to execute budget amendments for over budget employee benefits. At a fund balance, $55,566. At a fund balance, $55,566, and it goes to the group life insurance and personnel services, the sick incentive. That's where we reward employees who have not used their sick time.
That's right.
Any questions, concerns? I need a motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Kelly, unmuted.
I'm so sorry, yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Fifty-four?
Let me ask one question, is this the one from contingent to Marina, the 55?
No, this is from fund balance. Personal services.
That was two A two. That's why I got confused. I'll vote yes, and we'll review fund balance, I think, issue tomorrow, because I think we're really, really deep into the
Yeah.
three zero, two, two plus three zeros. All right. We'll discuss it tomorrow, but I I vote yes, we're done.
Mayor Murphy? Aye. Now, I gotta add an item to the agenda. I need a motion to add, it's the Arcadia's bill that got put in late. We all got an email today.
Yes.
Let's give me first, don't we have two, two transfers?
Yes.
Why don't we do them?
Well, I must have missed one. Mayor, do you want me to add?
You missed the one I mentioned about.
I'm sorry, you know, I did miss one.
Yeah.
My bad, let's do that one too. This is out of contingent, authorized to execute budget transfers for over-budget expenses, $55,183 from contingent to Marina and docks. And they've been doing a ton of work on Marina and docks, haven't they, Eric?
They have, mayor, but this is a result of the fact that we had an employee at the at the Marine, the master harbor, the harbor master unit, who was out on sick for a long period of time. And we had to cover the duties of the harbor master with a with an interim harbor master. And so this is a result of that. That employee has retired, and now we have a new harbor master. And so this gets us to the end of the year because of those issues that we had. You know, with the with the long illness.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Patches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay. What I prematurely was talking about before was the Arcadia's bill. So $8,910.29. This was an oversight that didn't get onto the abstract that we all had emailed today. So I would like to add this to the abstract. Have a motion to add the Arcadia's bill to the abstract.
Can I, since we don't do this often, how, what, when did it come in? Because we, I don't know, I need to know what I'm paying, right?
Yeah, so it came in, it came in on December 19th, and unfortunately, we didn't have, we didn't get it set up in the last few meetings. And so we got an email from the, from Kevin today, asking where it was, and we realized that it was not on the abstract today, nor was it on prior, so it was completely our fault that we missed it.
And what is it about?
It's about the sewer rehabilitation, the the bidding and design of the project and the review of that project.
And it's the final payment. It's the final payment. Right?
It is the final payment of the bid and design of the most recent sewer rehabilitation project, which went out. So there was some finalization that had to be done by Arcadis before the bid went out. That was completed. Once we received the bids, Arcadis helped Dan and I review the bids and to make sure everything was appropriate. And then the board recently awarded that bid. And so this is the finalization of that. This, you know, this started a while ago.
We kind of passed due on this.
And the work is, and the work is complete.
The work for this product, for this end of it is complete. The bid has been awarded, so no more, they don't have to do anything else to the bid since it's been awarded, and we move on from there.
Now I understand, so it's not like $9,000, and it's under the, it's covered by what we authorized.
Yeah, well, a while ago, Victor, a while ago, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion to add that to the abstract.
I'll move.
Second. Thank you.
Call roll on that one.
Trustee Winthrop?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Fifty-four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, with that addition, the abstract tonight is $398,447.73. Anybody in the board have questions or concerns?
Yes, on page three.
Yes.
You, I don't understand the Spinelli survey.
So we had some of the area. We had the survey of Staub Court provided by Spinelli, because we were having some issues with some law enforcement problems in that area. And we needed to make sure that the street, as well as the properties, were well-defined for us in order to move forward. This was collaborative between the police chief and myself. I can't really go into further, because it's an ongoing issue.
Other questions? Okay, so hearing none. I need a motion to approve the abstract.
I'll move.
Kelly, move?
I did.
Thank you.
Second.
Laura, second?
Yep.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Patches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Thank, old business, there being no business. Oh, you resolution scheduling, public hearing, and PLC, tax cap override. Every year, the village does this. When I was at the town of Manic, we did this too. I don't expect that this community going to override the tax cap. But you never know what's going to happen. If last year taught us anything, you never know what's going to happen between now and the time we pass. So I always look at this as belts and suspenders. If tragedy or catastrophe happened, and we had to violate the tax cap, this would give us the authority. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay, hearing none. I will make the motion, because I know it's a hard motion to make.
I'll second.
Yes.
Patches?
I don't mind voting yes to schedule the hearing.
Good.
Lucas?
Same, I agree, yes.
Fifty-four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
And this is for next week? This is for the eighth February, or when?
It just, it just keeps rolling over.
Where are we setting it for, the first one?
Right. February 22nd, it says.
February 22nd.
February 22nd, Victor.
Okay, I got it, yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
And then it just keeps rolling over, in case we have to do it.
Correct.
Well, I think we have, on February 22, you open it and you adjourn it.
Yes, but we keep.
Yeah.
But you have to actually open it. Four B, resolution scheduling fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget hearings and meetings. We have before us a proposed schedule for Mr. Bavaria. About doing one department at each session, so we're adding more sessions. I understand that there is a a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. I personally cannot make that meeting tomorrow, but I will not ask that if we reschedule. Watch it. Something I can't get out of. I also have a conflict with the 16th. Does anybody else have any other conflicts? I know Dan had one in the 17th, right?
Seventeenth, the March 16th. I suggested that I, 18th to 24th, and the third. Or
Let's do this, let's get everybody's conflicts, and then we'll, we'll, we'll look at scheduling dates. So you have a conflict on the 16th and the 17th, right?
I have a conflict on the 17th, definitely, possibly the 16th, but you, you're, you're conflicted on the 16th.
Yes. And the other trustees have conflicts on any of these dates.
I'm checking, I do have a conflict on February 16th.
Okay.
I'm okay, the only real conflicts I might have are Thursdays, but we'll be done by, if we're done by 6:30, because that's when the, when I'm hosting the ad hoc ethics committee. I'm not sure there were any dates that conflicted with that.
Okay.
I think we're okay.
Thursdays are out.
Thursdays are out for Victor anyway, right?
So there's no Thursdays on here anyway.
I didn't put any on.
Okay, thank you.
Thursday's a gem for every other meeting, too.
Yeah.
16th and the 17th, let's say we reschedule that.
But March 16th and 17th?
Yeah, March 16th, there's three people with a conflict. March 17th, Dan has a conflict. February, I'm sorry.
February 17th.
February, my, my, my bad. Well, I should have said February 11th.
And
then I have March 16th, those are the three dates that I have a problem with at the moment.
Are you also March 16th then?
Yeah, March 16th, also, as a concern.
The 17th in March.
Let's, let's do the first one first.
So is February, is February 24 available to replace February 16?
That is available tomorrow.
About the others?
I could make the, I could make the 24th.
And there's no other village meeting?
Planning board at seven o'clock.
Okay.
So these are meetings at five o'clock, am I right?
Yeah, they're all five o'clock, yeah.
Yeah.
So we would move February 16 to February 24.
That means, okay, now, okay.
Yes.
I have a conflict now, but we also need the police reform discussion. Before you move from February to April to March.
Let's just get through the, this change first, you're right, Victor, we do need to do that. First, let's reschedule, February 24. Harbor master.
I got harbor master and clerk treasurer.
Okay. Now
Is it, is it 23rd available as well?
We have one.
We have one, police department.
What about the 25th? No.
Thursdays are no good.
March 1.
We have March 1 for fire department.
I'm sorry, we already have.
How about March 2?
I, I can't do March 2.
We have
March 9.
March 3.
March, March 3 is only parks and rec, and it's open, and that's at 7:30.
Yeah, so I agree, I agree to do that.
So February 17 to March 3?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, March 3. Okay, now we have the 16th as a conflict. March 16, it's a Tuesday with village manager and HR department. So let's see what we can do for that earlier in the month.
How about the 15th? We have the 15th scheduled, no?
We have the 15th scheduled.
Yes, I'm sorry, you do. That's March 17th. Say again?
Saint Patrick's Day, it's natural, it's a, it's a national holiday for the mayor. So, yeah.
No Irish joke there.
I didn't say any, I didn't, I held that, I held back, the 17th or the 9th?
I felt you thinking.
You know, we're not going to get conflicts later on, because now, but now it's open, so let's put the 9th.
The 9th?
I can't do the 9th, okay.
That's fine.
I mean, you know what, I would really, we're putting them on Wednesday, 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 and every Wednesday is is bad for me. So if we can, like, I'm, I'm rearranging things, like, I can be there all Wednesday, but I can't rearrange it every single Wednesday. So we, I need a few Wednesdays off sprinkled in.
Okay, so let me offer this. We can let's see what we can do it.
Can I, can I ask you folks something?
Yes.
And is there a time? Not a Thursday, not a Wednesday, where folks maybe can do it early?
Victor, well, Victor teaches till six. Then I have the ad hoc ethics review committee, but I could, I could ask them, maybe we could do it, they're at 6:30. So maybe we could do it once at 6:30 on a Thursday?
I was talking about like during the day.
Yeah, so
See, we can't
At the risk of inferring everybody's wrath, what about Friday?
I work on Friday.
I work on Friday.
Why?
Mayor, if we, if we start, if we start a couple of meetings at four o'clock instead of five o'clock, then we can, then we can throw the March 16th conflict with the manager and the HR, we can throw that on to another day.
Yeah, Victor, Victor.
We have to work
Prior day, okay, okay.
Can't free up before.
Okay, okay.
We have to be open.
Yeah.
Just lump, lump two of the meetings, put
Would it, would it be the worst thing in the world if on February 23rd, we did the fire and the police together?
As long as the police go first, I don't have a problem with that.
Is everybody ready with that?
Fire department may be extensive this time around.
Okay, so we can call a public safety night.
Public safety night, yep. And then make the 16th, and then, and then move the 16th to March 1st?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine.
Does that, Kelly, does that work for you for Wednesdays?
Um, well, we're talking about March 1st now, right?
Right.
And I know we also have on a March 3rd, I put it in, but
Okay.
Okay, so the 16th eliminated. And public safety is on February 23rd.
And on the 23rd?
That, that opens up March 1st, right?
Yep, March 1st is village manager and HR.
Oh, right, because we combined those, okay.
I'm gonna find a night.
Now we have to do the police reform.
The seventeenth has been going around in emails today.
Apparently that's not good for Dan.
Okay.
I hate to do this. How about Friday and nineteenth?
That works for me.
Friday, February nineteenth?
Yeah, because we really can't wait forever.
No, we can't. It's already, I mean, even doing it the thirteenth is two weeks after we wanted to. Seventeen, all right, I can do Friday, what time? Do it at seven on Friday, though. Five?
Five fifteen. We usually meet with the PRC.
Now we need to see if it's okay with them. Do you want me to, do you want me to send an email saying that's what we're looking at now?
No, Jerry will do that.
I'll do that now.
There's a thread going.
We think that's a, we think that's a two hour meeting?
Well, I think it might be longer, but at least we can get started. That delays it for almost three weeks from our initial meeting. How about Friday the twelfth? A week earlier. No, Tom?
No. I got plans. I don't have a lot of plans these days.
I have plans, I just don't always accomplish everything.
Okay, so nineteenth for PRC. All right, has anybody been keeping track of us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask Augie. To read the new dates and then I'm gonna make a motion to accept that.
Okay.
Mr. Foster. February sixteen, twenty twenty one has been transferred to February twenty fourth. To do both police first and fire second. February seven.
No.
It's Harbor Master and Clerk Treasurer on February twenty fourth.
The February seventeenth. Meeting, which was Parks and Recreation, has been moved to March third.
Yes.
Okay.
February twenty third, budget meeting now will be police first, fire second. And the March first meeting. Will be Village Manager and HR.
Yes.
That is it, that's all the changes. The March sixteen meeting has been canceled. February twenty fourth will be budget work session for capital budget.
March twenty fourth is capital budget, February twenty fourth is Harbor Master and Clerk Treasurer.
Yes.
March third is parks.
Yes, yes. Which is actually, yeah.
We have revenues at the end. We have the same problem. What we're having last year, I think revenues is, has to be. Brought earlier on to which you start discussing that tomorrow and revisit as necessary, because if we leave it for the end. Then. Think, thinks, things don't make any sense, right?
We, we can do revenue tomorrow, but some of those revenues would be. Yeah, speculative, longer guesses, if that's really a thing, but you're right. I mean, we could definitely talk about it tomorrow.
You need some reference points, right? So, so we need to, we need to revisit that. Starting tomorrow, okay.
As long as we all. Realize that that number can change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good. No problem there.
Based upon. What Clerk Treasurer Fusco just delineated.
I'll second that.
Will you please? Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Antes?
Yes.
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
That was, you know. I think people realize how many meetings we did. Resolution authorizing Water Works. Project A. Also custom meter pressure regulator vault at Anderson Hill. We talked about this. In the work session. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the Anderson Hill?
I have some suggestions for the resolution because. I appreciate, I know probably Dan was putting this all together, I just want, just more minor things for clarity. This is the Anderson Hill, right? This is the one that you. They've mentioned this is a. Emergency contract, but in any case, here it is. We have a cost of one hundred and forty thousand. Approximately. My, my, my comment is the third we're asked. Because it says that the installation meets New York City, the. Department of Environmental Protection requirements, which is very, very broad. So my suggestion is to change it to the following. Installation of this vault and meter relates to, instead of meet. The New York City Department of Environmental Protection Demand Management Program, including that requirements. And then continue.
Okay. I'm proud of that.
That's the third we're asked, so it does explain why we're, why, why, why this is needed. And we're not overstating it, that's, doesn't mean a lot, but it could, you know, the, the requirements could be many things.
Okay.
Just to be specific.
Victor, would you like to make that motion as amended?
As amended.
I'll second that. Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Antes?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Trustees, the floor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, the next item is. Water Works product for Howard Avenue water main replacement. They're replacing a two and a half inch pipe with a six inch pipe. This will provide better fire protection and better service to the eleven homes on that area. This is being done in tandem with the Con Edison replacement of the gas main. So Con Edison is gonna pick up the cost of the paving. Any questions or concerns?
So. This is not, it's not an emergency, but it's something that's in line to be being done?
It's, it's a priority emergency contract. It's a priority because Con Ed's doing the pipe now. Pipe has failed before. It's undersized. And. The contractor needs to work in tandem with Con Edison, so that we're not.
So, so there's a cost savings in not having to do the road ourselves, or having the waterworks do the road.
Correct.
So this goes back to the idea that we should be like having a list of things we should just be doing. You know, once COVID is over and do projects ahead of time, so we're not doing. Emergency projects or minimizing the emergency projects.
Okay. Need a second?
I'll second.
What was it? Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
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 Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Item four E, residential water runs in fifteen minute parking area outside the Harbor Island Shack. This is.
What, one question, why are we not doing all the joint waterworks pieces together?
The way they have it on the thing and I'm going.
Okay.
Resolution authorizing fifteen minute parking outside Harbor Island Shack. This is where the bait station is down in Harbor Island and. They've now put a little. Trailer where I think they're selling refreshments, which is. So Jerry. Allow for fifteen year parking for somebody to buy and bake or picking up a cup of coffee.
That is correct. They sell, they sell great turkey chili over there.
Okay.
I think some what?
Turkey chili, Dan, turkey chili. Staple of anyone's diet.
All right, I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Antes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next resolution is changes to, it's not really changed the procurement policy, what it is, it's updating. Putting new names to. We have credit cards, Village Manager Barbiero, Assistant Village Manager Sonoff, Police Chief DeRusa. Clerk Treasurer Obi Fusco and Recreation Supervisor Jason Pinto. And they each have a five thousand dollar limit. This is if there's emergencies that have to be, what, a weekend or some situation. Where they need a credit card, they could use it and then gets immediately reported to. Am I right, Obi?
Organization has to be given by the village manager.
Okay.
This resolution pretty much just adds the police chief on here.
Right.
True. We've basically taken off Chris Lady and we're putting on Police Chief DeRusa.
Question, why is not DPW there? Because I've seen, I saw. On the order that builds reimbursements for purchases at Home Depot.
We provide several employees that are not on this list, Dan, Home Depot cards. I can't recall off the top of my head if Tony Acquavelli is one of those employees. But the Harbor Master is one of those employees, the, the. General Foreman at Parks was a Home Depot credit card holder. Dan or, or Augie, do you know if Tony has a, a Home Depot credit card?
He said yes, Jerry.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
This, this deal is specific with credit cards, the home give or the charge cards, it's like a house account.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw, but can't hear you.
Sorry. The other difference is that the Home Depot is a charge card, it's not a credit card. We pay the bill in full every month. So it's, it's, it's different from a credit card.
So basically what we're doing, doing here is. Changing the name of the police chief.
Yeah. On credit card.
Yes, so moved, second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Antes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, the next up is creating resolution authorizing living trips. So a few months back. I suggested that we do some sort of memorial to the work that all village employees of emergency service DPW parks. Have done in the time of COVID to serve our residents. Many times at the risk of their own health and safety. And we sent the idea from Memorial over to the Arts Council. And the Arts Council came up with some excellent suggestions about having a living memorial. Grove. To honor all of those who did so much for this community in the past year and moving into the next year. And they sent their conceptual ideas. And I think we were all blown by it. Resolution. Begins the process of looking at that. And I think it's very important that we honor. You know, there's been a lot of them who have been out with the disease and who. Had to quarantine, worried about bringing them home to their families and their children. And all in all, during all of that, they still kept the village running and they kept us all safe. And we will forever owe them debt of gratitude. But anybody have any questions or concerns?
Um, I just, can I add a little bit from the Arts Council meeting last week? So they would like very much to work, I tried to say this, but I was on mute at the work session. They very much would like to work with the tree committee and Jerry in selecting the trees. So have been thinking about elevating it a little bit, so I think it's a work in progress. But they would, they would like it to be a community event and they would like to work with the Arts Council and Jerry.
Well, I'll tell you what, from my point of view. Their ideas were much better than anything I was conceptualizing, so I'm really happy to have their input.
I think they were happy to do it. They thought about it a lot and this is what they came up with.
All right.
Beautiful.
I will make this motion.
Second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Antes?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Hi. The foreman of the court clerk, we are going to hold over because there is. Might take the job, is still mulling it. Resolution authorizing purchase of three police vehicles. We talked about this in work session. Jerry or Dan, you want to give the public a quick update?
Dan wants to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor. This is an item to purchase three police, three police cruisers for the police department. On annual basis, we. Rotate the rolling stock fleet of the police department. Typically purchase three vehicles. Difference this year is that we are using funds secured for us by the seller man Steve Otis rather than general fund. Monies, so that's the, the short version.
We think. State Assembly even notice. For us and helping us out. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Antes?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing C-MOM program for village sanitary sewer system. Jerry, this is you.
Wait, before you go, I'm recused.
Victor's recused on this and he stated his reasons.
I'm supposed to get out of the room, so I. What should I do? Just, just silence myself?
Silence and, and turn off your video.
Yeah, so we can't see your facial expressions.
Jerry?
So Mayor, C-MOM stands for, as I explained in work session, capacity management operations and the maintenance program. Of our village managed sewer lines. This is a. Broad stroke type of plan with a few details in there. But. At the work session, trustee Natchez asked me to augment the plan a little bit with some specifics. In item number four, which of course I will do. But this is a state regulatory requirement as well as a, I'm sorry, it's a. It's provided to us by. Through EPA guidelines and. Is part of ongoing. Settlement agreement as well as state regulatory agencies are requiring it. We have, I do want to add at this time that we have. Been able to catch up on reports that were due to the D C. Myself and staff in my office has been able to work on that and submit that to the D C, so. We are caught up on all of the reporting requirements that the village may have lagged behind in the past. This is part of. This is part of that, the CMON program is part of that. As well as we anticipate starting our sewer rehab and rehabilitation project on or about March 1st, unless the weather prohibits that and delays it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Jerry, thank you. I know this is a lot of work.
You're welcome.
Had to be done and, you know, it can't get kicked down the road for a long time and I appreciate you picking it up.
Nothing like a deadline to get stuff done.
Please have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes, with the amendments that will be forthcoming at a later date.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee for? Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Somebody text Victor, tell him to get back on the line.
He's here. I think he's just muted and
Yeah, I can come back on now.
Unless he left. Hello.
Great. Back in action. Okay. Four K. This is a resolution for Lane Project, Leaky Water Main of the Port Lane. Who shares? $1,493. Will be sharing this with the city of Bria. Questions or concerns? Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The floor?
Is this the 61,000?
61,493.
Okay, and, and this is, this is non, non emergency, right?
Right, right.
Okay, I go yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Hi.
And next one, authorization of Westchester Capital Project for water infrastructure related to planning, paving in the village of Mummernic. What this is, is when we pave, they like to go and fix their shuttle valves and fix problems that they know are there before doing all paving and rip up the street and working tandem with the village. I know every year we're paving, we give them a, a list of the streets to pave and they plan their work accordingly.
Mayor, that's how they come up with this number of 98,000, once they know the streets and what's going to happen during the season?
Truthfully, it, it, it's a, it's a ballpark. That's what they think it's going to be.
Okay, but this, 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 what timeframe is this for more or less?
Well, the next year we are during our paving season.
Yeah, this is for, actually this is for 2020, because we had to add, we had additional roads. I think we had to do additional work on Fenimore and so for this year.
Okay, I haven't spoken.
So is this, is this work that was already done?
Yes.
Fenimore and, and one other road was already done. Yep.
This then one of the things we already, we paid today, no? Upcoming. I think it's upcoming. The, um, this was part of the, the six or seven projects that Mr. Burke saw from the okay. Water Works. Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
But it's okay. It's just, it talks about planned pay, paving in 2020.
I recycled in old resolution.
Okay, so it should change to planned paving in the village of Mummernic in 2021?
No, it was not planned. Get rid of the planned.
Yeah.
It was paved in 2020.
Related to paving.
Okay.
We paved some, we paved some areas in 2020.
The next up is about the we have a motion on it?
No, but I'll move as amended, removing the word planned from the second warehouse.
Okay.
Second.
Ogie. Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The floor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
The next up is four M, the Kennelworth Storage Tanks. Concerns? So our share gets we have this, this is for another nine, $90,300 on the updated cost. It's a project we've approved already.
Yep. Right.
Questions or concerns?
Justice, is this being finalized, done? What do you know, Mayor, since you go there? Please, Mr. Mayor.
I, I think it's pretty much done.
Okay.
But I hate to say it, then no bill comes in.
Bill's coming, okay. Little one. Okay, okay with you.
I make the motion.
Second.
We're seeing a trustee, Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The floor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Water Works joint capital project to replace the Barry Avenue Macy Road 16 inch water main. And this is another
increase.
Increase to a previous approval. And this, I believe, when you read the backup from Mr. Burke's all, this had to do with rock chipping and a couple of the onsite problems. Significant rock removal and increased use of Kcrete. Addressing utility conflicts, the project was revised. You never know what you're going to do when you start digging.
No, I think that, that brief explanation helps a lot. So thank you, Dan and Laura, for, for asking.
The the questions of John Works has been instructed that anytime they send something to the village that they, they have an explanation. As per our conversations from before.
It's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So moved.
You moved?
I did.
I'll second.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The floor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Communication, round two. Seeing none. Report from the village manager.
Mayor, I only have one item. It is a amendment and renewal of a shared services agreement with Sustainable Westchester to file for the record. That's it from me.
Report from Mr. Clerk Treasurer.
Um, before you go through all the reports that were, and we were going to add to the agenda appointment.
Right. Uh, we're going to appoint three people to different boards and committees tonight. So I'm going to add item four O. And that would be to add an item to the agenda, appointing someone to the rec. So I can have a motion adding an item to the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor of adding an item to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a resident who has asked to be on the Recreation Commission. It's a young man, Emmanuel Rawlings. Mr. Rawlings grew up in Washingtonville on Old Post Road. He has been very, very active in the community. He works for STEM program. Funded him every Tuesday at the food giveaway. He has been a mentor in the STEM program. He is the first in his family to graduate college. He is, he's a young man, but he's got a lot of potential. I'm happy to put his name forward and to make the motion that he becomes a member of our recreation.
I would second.
All roll. Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The floor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. This, this item will be item four.
Could, could I just add that they have a meeting on Wednesday? So make, we should make sure we invite him to that. I'll work on that. Okay.
I got a feeling that Sally's going to be all of it.
I'm sure she will.
Someone to the Arts Council and this will be item four Q. So I need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know us?
Aye, yes.
The next, the, the person who we are going to be nominating tonight to be on the Arts Council is Ms. Heather Capell. She is the owner of a business here in the village that young children about are. Nora, would you like to respond upon this?
Yeah, so Heather, Heather's lived in the village for a while. She runs Artistry, which is the theater program on the Boston Post Road, kind of opposite Harbor Island Park. And she has, is interested in being on the Arts Council and I'm, I, she's my neighbor and I know her and I'm very happy to have her work on the Arts Council with everybody else and me.
Excellent.
So I, I move that we appoint Heather Capell to the Arts Council.
I'll second.
Will we go roll? Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The floor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
The next item is item four S, and this would be to add a to add, to add a member to the Harbor Coast's Own Management Commission. So more quickly to add an item.
So moved.
I can.
All in favor of adding a sign?
Aye.
Aye.
The gentleman who we're going to be appointing tonight to Harbor Coast's is Mr. Bertrand Sellier. He is news to the village. He's an attorney. And work on the Harbor Coast's Own Management Commission. It's a very important function in the village of Mummernic. Okay. Any questions or concerns?
No, thank him for his service.
I'll move.
Dan moved.
Second. Second.
What a second. Okay.
Trustees, Winship?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The floor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you. We heard from village manager, Clerk Treasurer.
Yes, Mayor. At the January 25th meeting, the board of trustees adopted a local law consolidating all general parking permits. Therefore, we will no longer be issuing RP, EV, EPON, or ON permits. All village lots will now require GP permit, which will allow for parking 24 hours per day, seven days a week. As RP permits expire at the end of February, residents with those permits can purchase a prorated GP permit for the month of March, April and May at a cost of $138. At the end of this period, they may purchase a GP permit for the period of June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2022. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Our reports from the village attorney?
I have three laws to report on tonight there. Local Law 5 of 2020, dealing with the residency requirements for court clerks was filed on December 29th. On the same day, the local law addressing smoking prohibition in certain areas was filed. And then on January 19th, the local law regarding the authority to remove members of the planning and zoning boards was filed with the, with the Senator Stitt.
Thank you. Okay, minutes, commissions, boards, committees, minutes of board trustees' work session and regular meeting of January 25th, 2021. Minutes of the Board of Architecture review of January 15th, 2021. Minutes of the Harbor Coast's Own Management Commission of June 17th, 2021. Minutes of the planning board meeting of September 23rd and October 4th, 2020. Minutes of the budget committee of December 8th, 2020. Minutes of the Arts Council of December 7th, 2020. Okay. There being no other business before the board. Intend a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Victor, second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, thanks for remembering the nominations or appointments.